Meeting to order for the March 21 regular meeting of the zoning commission in Simsbury. Let's see, since I didn't arrive on time, we have, we're missing, we're missing a few people. Let's see, do we have Jackie here? Do we have another alternate? Jackie to serve for Donna, I don't see Donna. And Tucker, you can serve for Anne, she's not going to be here. And Bruce is not going to be here either, so Melissa, you can serve for Bruce. That gets us to six, right? Okay, the first order of business is to approve the minutes of the February 28, 2022 meeting. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes? I read them and I didn't find anything. Not even a typo. Anybody? Kevin?
I think I'm fine.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of 20, February 28.
Yeah, I'll move their approval.
I'll second.
Second by Diane, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained when the minutes are approved, six, nothing. The next minutes is the minutes of meeting March 7. Again, I read those minutes carefully and didn't find anything, does anybody else see anything?
I'll move approval of the minutes of March 7.
A second?
Second.
By Jackie, was that her Donna?
No.
Melissa.
Melissa, I'm sorry, Melissa. You're up in the upper corner of my screen. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, abstained, it carries six, nothing. Okay, so we have a public hearing. What am I doing? Public hearing. Application 22-05 of the town of Simsbury. Can you read the call, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Application number 22-05 of the town of Simsbury owner applicant Jeff Wasniewski, agent applicant for site plan approval and special exception to section 6.3 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for the renovation in the floodplain of Latimer Lane School, including an expansion to the existing building, new parking, circulation improvements, accessible walkways and general landscape improvements for the property located at 33 Mountain View Road, Zone R40.
Thank you. Okay. Is there someone here to talk about this application for us?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please state your name and address.
It's Ernest Nepomuceno. I'm a senior designer with Tekton Architects and an associate. With me tonight is Allison Frost. She's the project architect on the project. We have Cynthia Jensen from Richter Seegan, our landscape architect. We also have Andrew Goralski, our civil engineer with SLR, as well as Dave Sullivan.
I guess we're safer on Zoom because we're outnumbered. Go ahead, Ernest, I'm sorry.
So I do have, I do have a few slides to go through if, if I could share my screen. And I should just say that Justin Hopkins, who the project, who's the project manager of this project, he and Jeff Wasinski, who's our principal, they had a conflict tonight, they're meeting with the building committee tonight at the same time, so. If there's time, Justin might hop on later.
Okay, I think you can share your screen.
Okay, great. So everybody see the cover?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay. So I just went over who the team is, I'll just go through the slides. Again, we have our consultants with us, SLR and Richter Seegan, as well as Tekton. Arcadis, Jack Butkus is owner's rep, ONG is the CM. SES Sustainable Engineering Solutions as another consultant. And landscape plan, and I'll have Cynthia go through this.
I am Cynthia Jensen with Richter and Seegan. And it's just kind of a quick orientation. The site is an existing school, obviously, it's approximately 28 acres. The existing school and parking and play areas are located on the eastern portion of the site, which is what you see here now. And on the western portion of the site, there are some existing lawn fields and they're separated by a slope in between. For orientation, Mountain View is at the bottom of the screen that runs along the eastern portion of the property. And Latimer Lane is on the western part of your screen, or sorry, left part of your screen, and it runs along the south portion of the site. The existing school building is shown in the light tan, and that is the portion that will be renovated. And there are two new additions proposed that are shown in the darker brown, one at the north and one at the southwest corner. And as you can see with these new additions, they will result in some new exterior courtyards, one at the north and one at the south. There is also a floodplain line that bisects the northeast corner of the site. It's in the lower right portion of your screen, and there's a gray dashed line that basically runs along Russell Brook. There's a wedge of a parking lot that is actually in the floodplain, just below the word parent drop off. It's a little faint to see there, but there's sort of a sliver of parking lot that is within the floodplain. Basically, the overall site, the circulation is going to remain the same, but the everything will be upgraded. And the basic layout and organization of the site will again remain the same. The site will be upgraded though to include new paving, new curb, new sidewalks, new play areas and new plantings. The work within the floodplain, as I mentioned, is that small sliver of parking that will be repaved with new curb. There is also a small section of drainage pipe that needs to be replaced as part of the stormwater improvements. The bus drop off and the small parking lot along Mountain View Drive will remain. The entry to the bus drop off will be moving further to the south to create a wider landscape median between the bus entry and the two-way access into the north parking lot. There's also an existing paved kind of cut through between the bus loop and that access drive that will be removed. So that it will be a continuous landscape island, and that should help with some of the circulation in that area. The north lot will be reconstructed and reconfigured with new landscape islands. The parent drop off pickup will essentially remain the same. Will happen, will loop around there along the sidewalk with the pickup and drop off happening at that northeast corner of the building. There is also a new service area that will be built that will be accessed off of the north parking lot, which is similar to how it functions now. Moving around the site, the basketball courts up in the northwest corner will remain in the same location. And the adjacent play area to the south of the courts will be reconfigured with both new equipment and relocating some of the existing equipment. There will be a new paved walk along the west side of the school, which will serve the two new doors that will be along the west side. So it will also provide circulation around the school and allow spaces off of that walk for some outdoor classrooms. And provide access to the new accessible walk that will be going to the upper fields. Moving around to the south side, the play areas will be reconfigured with the addition of a separated kindergarten play area. And the new grade one to three play areas will have new equipment and new paved play areas. And the play equipment area will actually be brought up slope closer to the school. And the existing Gaga pit and buddy bench will be relocated and reincorporated into the, the new design. Throughout the site, there will be all new landscaping as well. New trees and shrubs, particularly around the play areas and the outdoor classrooms and the entries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Cynthia. So this slide indicating the engineering has reviewed the civil drawings. And comments have been responded to. And Andrew Goralski, if there's any questions or comments, could you guide us through this drawing here?
Yeah, I could talk about this drawing briefly. So what you're looking at right now is our sedimentary control sheet, but you can also see the utilities on site that we're proposing. Currently under existing conditions on the site, there are two main discharges, one to Mountain View Road from some of the parking areas and some of the field areas around the school. And then another being over to the northern side of the building, so plan right for you. There's a concrete head wall near the wetlands, some of the site is also discharging too. Under our proposed conditions, we're proposing to add a stormwater treatment train that includes some two-foot sumps and proposed catch basins, hydrodynamic separators for water quality, as well as two underground infiltration systems. You can see one to the north of the building, the larger one in the parking area. And then in the smaller parking area to, towards Mountain View Road, we have another infiltration system. And through the use of these, we're able to achieve no increases in peak runoff for all the required storms on site. We meet the groundwater recharge volume and the water quality volume required by Simsbury and as Ernest mentioned, we work closely with the engineering department to respond to their questions and comments on our utility design, but I am here to answer any more questions if you have them. And I think we can go to the next slide if we're ready.
Is Dave able to?
I'm here.
Discuss the.
Good evening, Dave Sullivan, I'm with SLR, professional engineer, and I manage the transportation planning group. I'll give you a brief overview of the traffic study and our findings and be happy to answer any questions. On the left, you'll see the location of the site vis a vis the area roadways, and I think they were, as mentioned, Mountain View Road on the east side and Latimer Lane to the south. You'll see in the two tables, table one is the information that we collected in the field during normal school hours. And below is our projection of what the traffic will be post, post renovation. The difference between the two essentially is the change in enrollment, so we prorated the characteristics that we counted under the existing 436 student enrollment to projected enrollment in 2027, 28 school year of 522 students. So that was a, about a 20% increase in all of the characteristics we observed. We then took the expanded 27, 2027, 2028 school traffic and we put the increased volumes on our study area, which included the all of the site driveways as well as the intersection of Latimer Lane and Mountain View Drive. And we determined what the level of service would be under current enrollment and future enrollment. And we found essentially that the traffic operations would not change and generally level of service be was calculated. So the, we found no impact to the traffic operations on the area streets. We did have a recommendation, we are aware of the operations of the drive-through and we did have some, a couple of observations that we would make in terms of recommendations. The first, in the morning, typically we don't see vehicle backups and queuing in the morning because there, there's really nothing that they're typically waiting for. In this particular case, parents arrive prior to the school actually opening. And that's why you get the backup of the, the parent vehicles. Our recommendation is quite simple. Let the students enter the school a little bit earlier. And that way, the parents, if they're, if they are arriving earlier, have the ability to drop off the student and eliminate that queuing issue. In the afternoon, the, that's not an option, that particular thing, you can't, the dismissal time is the dismissal time. But what we do know is that the operation is pretty efficient out there, how they do the pickup operation now. So we would, you know, you know, obviously continue doing that. But we also have built in onsite some additional storage for that first wave of parents. As a matter of fact, we think we could probably store upwards of 10 more vehicles on site in that third, in that middle aisle in the parking lot. Today, that's would be lining up in a counterflow direction and we think since it's a two-way aisle, we could use that as short-term storage for the parents. So we have a little bit of an answer for the slight increase in the, in the parent pickup and drop off. And we don't anticipate there'll be any traffic impacts at Latimer and Mountain View Drive. I'll be happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'll turn it back.
Great. Thanks, Dave. So real quickly, in the floor plan, as Cynthia mentioned earlier, so the, the heavy blue outline represents the existing school. The footprint of the existing school. And this is the south addition as well as the north addition. So it'll all be demolished with the exception of the existing masonry walls that we have at the classrooms. We reconfigure the, the kindergarten section is down to the bottom left corner with grade one, grade two, grade three and four up in this southwest wing and five and six. And what we've, what we've created here with the old cafeteria and gymnasium is the media center and then bringing along this center spine, the music program. There's two music classrooms here to the left and then the art program. So this really creates a really nice kind of cultural hub at the center of the school. With the music room, it's got access to the courtyard where we could see some small concerts happening, impromptu concerts, as well as nice daylight for the interior classrooms. On the other side, there's access from the media center and the art building to access this north courtyard, as well as the new cafeteria. So we've got this section of the cafeteria opening up into the courtyard. And this allowing visibility in daylight along the east drive. Admin is down here with the nurses, nurses office. We've got our new kitchen. This is our, our new north entry with a ADA accessible walkway. And then our service drive, our mechanical room and restrooms with our new gymnasium. Additional music and instrument room with the stage. Some specialized classrooms and then storage for the gymnasium. This is the proposed new entry, there's the addition off to the north where we've got the cafeteria, the center aisle that separates the parent drop off with the, with the bus loop. A proposed new canopy for the front entry. And then obviously brand new, brand new windows throughout. This is a view from Latimer Lane. Is there a question? A view from Latimer Lane, so this just illustrates a little bit of, of the coverage that you get with the, with the new plantings, landscaping through, for the playgrounds. So this will allow some, not only security, but some privacy. A view towards the new entry, so this is along the parent drop off. Entry canopy for the students and parents, again, the cafeteria. Over to the right, there's the, the loading. And that would be screened off with a taller brick wall and beyond is the gymnasium. So we get a lot of natural daylight, it's hard to tell from the rendering, but this would be an acrylic glazing system that will allow a lot of natural daylight from the north diffused into that gymnasium. So you'll have some great natural daylight in there. Some of the materials we're looking at, obviously we want to, we want to match the brick that's there now with, with the addition. And this is a good example of the acrylic panel that we're proposing for the gymnasium. It's something that we use, this is the school we did at Oxford Middle School. You could see at nighttime, the diffusion of, of the light, day and night. And some of where we've got our canopies, the idea suggesting that we use a wood, would warm wood look on your side of the canopies. Some of the details we're looking at, which is just a simple ribbing with the brick, just to give it some activity, some nice shadow lines for a little detail. Other materials, a form metal panel where we've got the upper portion of the gymnasium. Plus also just to give a nice contrasting material to, to all the brick. Again, the polycarbonate panel and then the metal clad wood soffits. And that's, that's all we got, so we open it up to any comments? Questions?
Thank you very much. Laura, is there any comments from design review?
They appeared before the design review board, not tonight, but the previous meeting, and they did receive a positive referral.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with questions from the commissioners.
Question, I will say, first of all, I think it looks lovely and I know it's long overdue. Mr. Luzetti will remember that I was there for the whole Terrafill School renovation and, and there's nothing like finally getting the renovations that you've been wanting for a long time, I think it looks great. Hopefully, it will accommodate all of the additional students that I know that you've had an influx of over the past couple of years. I just wanted to note, real quick question, at the very beginning, you mentioned that there was a piece of the parking lot that's in the floodplain, like a little, little sliver there. Was that previously like that? I might have said it at the very beginning, but I wasn't sure, was, was that, is that new or is that how it was previously?
No, that is the existing parking lot, yes. Yeah, so essentially everything is remaining in the same location. Again, it'll just be repaved with new curbing, so it, it was existing in the floodplain.
Okay, I thought you said that, but I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Is that going to be pervious paving or?
That will be the, it's not pervious, no. But two minutes concrete pavement.
Okay.
Which is what is there now.
Okay, Kevin?
Mr. Sullivan mentioned that there'd be some demolition?
Yes, there'll be, just, just to complete the, the, the addition, really, there's, it's, it's minor where we've got these exterior walls to accommodate some of the, we're, we're kind of jigsawing these, these additions in. So there'll be some minor demolition. We're removing all the, the windows to replace with brand new windows. There's some canopies here at the current loading dock. So not, not a tremendous amount of demolition.
Okay, and, and the, the plan for the school year, how do you do your construction while it's an active school?
I know we're doing this in phases and we're trying to figure out what is the sequence. We're working with ONG on that, so I can't speak to that, but I know that the, the strategy for the phasing has to be in place and so how.
Ernest, I can, I can handle a little bit of that if you're comfortable with it.
Great, yeah.
So Kevin answered the question, phase one, if all goes well and we, is, is about a 12 months phase. And what it would be is it's everything to the north, all of the new addition. And then it would, excuse me, it would also encompass the new portion to the south side to the screen left. The only thing it would really pull offline for that first year in phase one are those three existing classrooms, that 1993 vintage, I believe. Yep, those three right there. And what would we would do, would be to, to shift those classes into the, into the core of the building. Phase two would be about six months and it represents the upper half of the building. And then phase three really is the lower portion down by the road, which is about, again, about a six-month phase. So at this point, we're, we're aiming for three phases of construction.
Overall, how many years is that?
About, about 24 months.
24 months, okay, and you can handle that within the building, the, moving around to the classrooms?
I, I already have a map of who goes where, when.
Melissa, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering what kind of alternative energy solutions have been built into this design? Are there new EV charging stations for teachers' cars? Are there, are there placements for solar panels on the roofs? What, what kind of steps have been taken to make this a clean energy type building?
So, sorry.
Go ahead, LT. No.
I was going to say, we do have, we do have charging stations for vehicles. I think we provided two, two or three. And we are from the Clean Energy Task Force that the town has, has linked with us, we are making the building net zero ready. So we are doing our best to locate our rooftop mechanical units and any other rooftop equipment, really. Any projections we have in the roof, we're being very conscious of how that affects the, if the amount of flat roofs we have for future solar panels. The solar panels are not in our project scope right now, I believe, but we are, as I said, doing everything to, to make it so that it can be a future, future addition.
So Mark, Mark Scully and his team have had their, their eyes on this already?
They have been frequent contributors at the PBC meeting.
Excellent, I'm good with that then.
And we are also using either a hybrid or a full geothermal system for, for heating the building, so.
Great.
We are working actively with, with the Clean Energy Task Force, so.
I had one, I had one unrelated question, if I could follow up, Dave. On the outdoor classrooms, are those new, you know, post-COVID types of thoughts or were those always in the plans for the, the renovation?
So the outdoor classroom space is something that I brought up with, with Jeff Wasinski, three years ago, pre-COVID. COVID has further highlighted the need for them. So it was, that was then, that was always a part of our goal with Tekton was to, supposed to create some indoor, some outdoor classroom spaces. But they really delivered above and beyond and you'll notice on the, the, the other version of this, you'll see some actual outdoor to the, to the western side of the school as well.
Thanks.
So there's spots you could. So there's spots you could probably get five or six classrooms comfortably situated in different spots outside doing some work.
That's great.
Um, how is there separation for, for bicycles and cars coming into here? Where would you see the kids coming in with, with their bikes?
So there is an existing sidewalk that comes up both sides of Mountain View, and the bike racks are, there are some existing bike racks at the front of the school, and there will be new bike racks proposed there as well. So using the sidewalks and the crosswalks to access those.
Okay, so the cars are in some conflict with the bikes. But is, is there a person stationed out there or something during this time?
Mike, can you answer that?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so Kevin, so we have somebody at the bottom of the road who crosses them over, and then we also have someone at the top, um, of the parking lot, right about actually where the cursor is, um, who, who crosses our walkers and bikers over there. Um, and the reason we put the, the, uh, the bike racks where we did is the overwhelming majority of our bikers come from the neighborhood, um, to the nor, to the northeast, um, uh, of where the school is. Very, surprisingly, very few come down Latimer Lane. Um, most of them come from, from the neighborhood right across from us. But yeah, there is someone to cross them at the top of Latimer. There is someone to cross them onto the property at the bottom. Um, and then we do have a, a staff crosswalk, um, right at the front entrance of the school as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the commissioners?
Um, I, I had a question. Um, about the, uh, the traffic plan, um, specifically the arithmetic you guys did on, um, how many new, uh, vehicles are going to be going through the, uh, parking lot there? Yeah, this one here. Um, so I see an increase in parent cars, and the buses, uh, stay the same. As I understand it, aren't some of these new students going to be coming from some of the new, newer housing developments in the area? And if so, aren't some of them going to be collected up by those buses? Aren't the buses just going to be more full, as opposed to there being all those people just deciding to take their kid in their individual vehicles? Or is that already accounted for in the math?
So let me, let me answer that from my perspective, Dave Sullivan. Um, our understanding is that there would not be additional bus routes. It would just be a, a larger, um, uh, population on the existing buses. There may be some modifications to routes, but not additional buses. So the number of buses were to be, remain the same.
Right, so the, so on top of the existing buses getting more full, you would also expect there to be more individual parent, parent cars?
Correct, correct, and, um, you can see, if you look at the top line in the bottom table, versus the top line in the upper table, that's the addition of, of new, additional parents.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, any of the commissioners? Okay, um, is there anyone from the public who wants to speak to this application? I don't see any people from the public on our grid here. Have we gotten any comments, Laura, from the, from the public?
And I have received no public comment on this application.
And I'll comment that, that staff comments have been addressed, and Wetlands applications have been approved.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Okay, I, I have a question that's on the south, um, outdoor, uh, class area, or whatever it is. Um, in your other, in your drawing that shows the, the rooms, um, I don't see any access to that. How do people get into that?
So, I don't know if it would, go ahead, or, oh, well, correct, there's the, the, the doors right there off the new addition.
Okay, but show, show me the roof, the, um, the other drawing that has the layout of the interior with all the rooms. There. That's the entrance down here, down at the bottom. See the outdoor courtyard and the northeast corner?
So there are, there-
Of that room, of that outdoor space.
The court, the outdoor courtyard outside of the music, instrumental music room.
No, the one, that one there, where's the entrance to that one?
There's access from the corridor, from our main, our main-
Okay, okay, I just saw that blue block there and thought-
And then there's two doors from the instrumental music room.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure there was an entrance there, I just didn't see it. Um, okay, we don't have any comments from the public, any more comments from the commissioners? We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Who is that?
Second.
Jackie.
Jackie, and Melissa's second? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstained, none? Okay, it carries six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another, uh, public hearing to open?
Haven't voted yet, so don't get too excited.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Thank you, Kevin.
No, no, they're thanking us, but we haven't finished the, the vote, we just closed the public hearing.
All in favor? Didn't I hear the vote?
Yeah, we did that.
Oh, we did that?
Yeah, no, I was just, Mike was thanking us, and I was just letting him know that we haven't approved the project yet.
Oh, right, that's true. Okay, we haven't, we haven't voted for the project, we voted to close the public hearing, I'm sorry, okay. You had me confused. We have had times where we've skipped the vote after we've had, made the motion. Anyway, so the next public hearing, could you read the call, please? It's, uh, application 22-
Application 2207 of Frank Ippolito. Applicant agent, 32 Main Street LLC, owner, application for a special exception to Section 8.6 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for the change of a liquor permit from beer and wine to full liquor for the property located at 32 Main Street Assessment Path, KO3, Block 219, Lot 003, uh, Zone B2.
Thank you. Okay, is Mr. Ippolito here? Somebody speaking for this application? Laura? Laura, is there anyone speaking to this application?
I believe I see Frank there. Would you like to present?
He's muted. Hey, Frank? Can you unmute yourself? You're still.
So this Ken, is this Ken Costello?
There you are, now you're good.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I'm still sorry about that, this is my first time actually using Zoom.
Oh, there you are, okay. All right, go ahead.
Um, hi, my name's Frank, and, um, I am, we, the owner of Marco's Restaurant, and, uh, we currently serve, uh, beer and wine. We're just looking to convert, to start selling, uh, full, full liquor. We're not, we're not building out a bar, we're just gonna have a, uh, well in the back where we mix some cocktails. Um, and yeah, that's kind of it.
Okay, questions from the commissioners? Diane, you're from Terriffill, what's the?
I am 100% on board with this. We very much enjoy Marco's, and I'm sure we would very much enjoy a cocktail, so, um, I'm good with it.
Are you closer than Diane?
I'm significantly closer. And, uh, not that I spend a lot of time in that area with all those, the, the, the bars and liquor stores down there.
Of course not.
But, uh, but, uh, no, I mean, uh, I'm actually surprised that, uh, you guys didn't already have a liquor license. It seems like having a martini with your Italian food is something you guys definitely have a good taste in, so.
I mean, people, people walk in and they instinctually say, you know, you say, can I, can I get for you to drink? I'll have a Tito's and tonic. And we're like, oh, I'm sorry, you know, like it, it almost, it almost doesn't fit. Not, not having that element almost doesn't fit in, you know, what we've, what we've built out here, so.
Yeah, no, you guys have a, a very, very classy, very nice joint there, and, and yeah, this, this makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of the commissioners? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this application? I don't hear anybody. Did we get any comments, uh, received, Laura?
No public comment on this application.
Okay. Um, I guess we could close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jackie.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, it carries six, nothing. Public hearing is closed.
Thanks for having me, guys. Do I need to stay on the call?
Sorry?
Do, do I need to stay on the rest of the Zoom, the Zoom meetings?
You, you don't have to, um, we're, we will consider the application. This is closing the public hearing. We have not voted on the application. So we'll take that up, um, this evening.
Okay.
Okay, the, the next order of business is consideration of the application. 20, 2205 of the Town of Simsbury, this is the Latimer Lane um, that we just looked at.
And as I stated prior, I kind of jumped the gun on that because you're just closing the public hearing. Um, staff com, um, I kind of jumped the gun on that because, um, I just want to reiterate that staff comments have been addressed. Your Wetlands application has been, um, approved for the work in the floodplain zone with the redoing of the, uh, parking lot area. And if there's any further comments for staff, I'd be happy to entertain those while you deliberate.
Okay.
Yeah, did we have a recommended, um, motion for that one?
I thought there was one, isn't there?
I didn't see one.
Laura? I believe it was part of the staff report that there should have been a, um, recommended motion. And I put it in there for the, there's one for the, um, site plan and special exception for work in the floodplain.
Okay.
I don't have access to this time, but, um, there should be one for the site plan approval, and then one for, um, a positive motion for work within the floodplain, which is just the resurfacing of the parking lot.
Uh, I don't, I don't see it, but, uh, I thought I-
I didn't see the staff report for this. I thought it was added later.
I don't see it.
No, let me look at what I got on my list.
There were two documents uploaded today, but I don't see it.
Oh, this, this was done much earlier than that.
Can you give us a summary of the staff report, please?
Um, the summary of the staff report finds that the, um, A, that the site plan is acceptable for the, um, the zone that it is under, and that, um, all the work that's being proposed for the site plan is consistent with the POCV, and that it meets the needs of what's requested. The work within the floodplain is just a re-establishment of an existing paved area, which will be, um, taken out and re-established in its same footprint, so there's no substantial impact or, or encroachment into the floodplain. It'll be consistent with what is already pre-existing. And Wetlands found that all, um, infiltration and discharges were, um, consistent with wetland regulations and approved.
Thank you. Do we need a separate motion for each one for the site plan approval?
You'll need, you'll need one for the- I would require, I would request a, um, approval for the site plan, and I would request an approval for the, uh, special exception for work within the floodplain.
Can we have a, a motion for the approval of the special exception? Considering the, uh, items that we need to cover. Laura, can you summarize, uh, the special exception criteria that we must, uh, meet? Or consider?
You're with me, one moment, I'll grab that for you.
Okay, one is, there's a list of several things that we need to consider. And I thought there was a memo that's, that gave those. Perhaps it was for Frank's?
Yeah, there is one for the restaurant.
Is for Frank's. So the commission has to consider one orderly development, property values, public safety. Tom, did you want to chime in since you did the staff report on this one?
I, I could chime in as you, can you start at the beginning, and I'll chime in on each one?
It's orderly development.
Not necessarily applicable, but it is in an orderly fashion.
Property values?
Um, not very applicable, but there should be some increase to property values due to increased school capacity and upgrades of schools.
Public safety.
Due to the consideration of access and traffic flow, there is an increase to public safety.
Traffic consideration?
Traffic consideration was made with the increased, uh, traffic flow considerations and staff, um, for public, um, for bike and pedestrian traffic.
Landscaping and buffers?
In, increase, um, in landscape and buffers and improvements throughout.
And relationship to utility systems, drainage systems, and impact on community facilities.
Meets all MS4 requirements and is an improvement.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the site plan consi, in consideration of the, um, topics that were mentioned?
Okay, that's a special exception, but I'll move that we approve the special exception based on the criteria, meeting, meeting all of the criteria for a special exception.
I'll second.
And I think it has to be subject to filing with the town clerk, right?
This will have to be filed with the town clerk on record.
That's, that should be part of the motion. Okay, second, who seconded?
I did, Dave.
Okay, is it okay if we add that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? You four against, Melissa?
I'm four, I just didn't, didn't raise my hand in time.
Almost against, okay, it's six, six, nothing, no abstentions, uh, thank you very much. Go Latimer Lane. All right, the next-
Uh, you have to do the site-
Oh, we gotta do the site plan, okay. Kevin?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve, uh, for a site plan approval for the, uh, Town of Simsbury. Subject to, what, an administrative?
Zoning permit?
Uh, zoning permit, um, is there any other criteria?
Um, in the, uh, in the approval of the, uh, staff making changes, minor changes as needed.
Okay.
For those two, two conditions.
Here, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jackie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, aye.
Opposed? We're six, nothing, so there can't be any abstentions, okay. Um, thank you. That takes care of the, uh, Latimer Lane application.
Do I get to say thank you now?
Yeah, Mike, you can go celebrate now.
You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, nice presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Good to see you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, application 2207 of Frank Ippolito. Any discussion, any comments?
I'll just say, I was being flip earlier about how incredibly enthusiastic I am, but really, there's no, there's no reason why we wouldn't want to go with this. It makes perfect sense. All the restaurants in the area have the same liquor license, so, you know, just on a, on actual merit, I just want to say that there's no reason not to go for that.
And I, I concur with Diane's comments. I think that Terriffill is a gem, and anything and everything we can do to make Marco's and all of their businesses more competitive, uh, is a plus and a win for everyone.
Okay, we have a staff report. Someone want to read the staff report, uh?
Well, it's the same thing, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The criteria, do we want to go through those like we did for the last one?
Uh, I think they are in the, um, motion.
They, they are.
At the staff, at the staff recommended motion, it, it has the, um, findings that the commission makes. Orderly development, property values, public safety, traffic, landscaping buffers, relationship to utility systems. We, we've considered that those have been answered by the, uh, staff report.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve application twenty-two oh seven, um, based on the attachment A to our agenda with all the findings and, uh, the terms, conditions of approval.
Here, a second?
I second.
Who's second?
Tucker, I second.
Tucker, okay, thank you, Tucker. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None, six, nothing, it carries. Thank you very much. Okay, then we have.
Congratulations, Frank.
Pardon?
Hey, thank you guys so much.
Congratulations to Frank.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you.
Okay, we have application twenty-two oh eight of Westminster School. Is there someone here to explain, uh, the application? The site plan amendment to, um, I think it's replacing the track and widening, uh, the, the football field and turning it into, uh, your turf, AstroTurf Field.
Yes, uh, hi, my name is Ken Costello with S M R T Architects and Engineers in Andover, Massachusetts. Uh, and we're working with the school, uh, on this project. Um, we've done multiple projects on campus and this is, uh, a replacement of the twenty-year-old track. And, uh, the track is in need of replacement and the project, um, when we, when we looked at the replacement with the school, um, right now, this, this track is an equal quadrant track, it's four hundred meters. Um, but it's narrow, it's long and narrow and, uh, perfect size, the inside of the track for a football field. Um, the school no longer has football and so as part of the exercise, we looked at the impacts of widening the track, still keeping it four hundred meters, but widening the field inside so that, um, you have a better play field for sports. So I can share my screen and go through some, uh, go through some images. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. So, um, this blue dash line you see on the screen is the existing track line. And you can see how the track has gotten wider, but shorter, um, in the north, north in, north is, um, north is, I believe it's left.
Um, to the left.
Yes. So, uh, so the, so north is left, so it's gotten shorter in the north-south axis and wider in the east-west axis. Um, what happens when we do that is we're impacting some of the existing infrastructure such as the existing filming tower, existing bleachers, and then we're extending into the woodlands, uh, slightly on the east side of the, of the track. Um, so what you see here is a four hundred meter, uh, certified track with, uh, the jumping events, the long jumps in the, in the hole vault inside the track with a, um, with a field in, internal of the track that would be a synthetic turf, similar to the turf that they have down on the lower field at Hovey Field right now, the lower fields, um, just to the east of this. Um, it's also associated with this, these improvements would be replacing the existing filming tower with then, with a new filming tower, similar to the one they have at Hovey Field. It's a pre-manufactured steel structure, sixteen feet tall. Installing a new, uh, storage building slash garage at the northeast corner of the track, um, where it's proposed a three-car wide garage for storage of field equipment, track equipment, um, and, uh, other athletic equipment. There's a two, uh, there's, there's two sheds or structures out there now for storage. This would be an in, uh, additional, uh, building for storage. And then replacement of the scoreboard. Uh, there's an existing scoreboard, uh, along the baseball field, uh, edge and we'd be replacing it with a new one, consistent with the rest of the scoreboards on campus. Um, yeah. Other improvements, yep.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Um, do I need to be on the rest of the call with you guys?
No, you're all done.
Thank you guys so much, have a good one.
Thank you.
Other improvements, the, other improvements to the project would be, uh, a new communications line, uh, some underground conduit from the pool building out to the, out to the filming tower to, uh, allow for streaming of games. There are no lights proposed for the project. Uh, and the site would be restored back to the outside of the field, we'd restore it back to, to lawn. So that was, this is the final engineering drawings. You can see the, the layout of the track. We've got the, uh, filming tower here uh, on the west side of the field with the three-car garage. Here's one of the storage buildings out there right now in the northeast corner. There's another one just off the survey, uh, limits there. Um, but other than that, it's really a replacement of what's out there. Um, there'll be a few upgrades with the, the graphics on the field and the graphics on the, on the track. You saw the, uh, black, currently the track is black and, uh, intention would be to have a, a black track with gold transition zones where the handoff is for the, uh, relays. And those are school colors. Um, we did receive some comments from engineering. Uh, we have looked at those and modified the stormwater management to, um, make sure we have the correct storms in our, in our, uh, stormwater management plan. Um, we do have existing, there are existing chambers underneath the field, um, both at the north side and at the south side. Um, in this project, because we are adding, um, impervious, would be adding some more chambers underneath the field similar to, um, the existing ones in place um, with all the water discharging, uh, to the east side as it's, as it currently does now. Um, so to do that, there was some comments from engineering regarding this, the storms. We upsized the storms, uh, as requested and we modified the stone layer underneath these, underneath these, um, structures uh, and added three inches of stone, which covers the, uh, stormwater requirements for, um, quantity. Um, so there's no net increase for runoff or from the, uh, from the project. And we also meet the recharge in the water quality requirements. Um, just kind of give you an overview of the the construction of the project. So the project will be accessed, um, from the existing driveway. There's an opening, uh, in the guardrail that's used for maintenance purposes and so, um, sorry. My machine's running a little laggy. Um, so there'll be a new driveway constructed to, um, access the field, uh, similar to way it was constructed twenty years ago, um, with an access point here with the, uh, construction of the, the track in the field. Um, and I said, as I noted, there's a, um, communications, new communications conduit and we have to rework some of the existing electrical, uh, as the new construction, um, disturbed some of that.
Can I ask you, what, what is the building to the right there? I'm just having a hard time orienting myself on the, on the, on the property.
This, this is the, this is the pool squash?
Okay.
Root tennis to the north of, root tennis to the top, right? Correct?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's over here to the upper right.
Right. Okay, so this comes in from, that's in the existing property.
Yes, this is all on the existing property. Um, and so, yeah, there's existing baseball, existing fields, there's parking along this, along this driveway here. Um, but the main entranceway is off to the right, the main entrance drive to campus.
Right, yeah, I remember from the last athletic field that there really is no athletic field parking. Um, you know, there's no huge field right nearby that people would park at.
Correct.
Along, along the road, but no, nothing, no.
Yeah, there's, there's head-in parking all along this road here.
Yeah.
Um, but again, you know, as part of this, is, is part of this project, you know, we're putting in the filming tower because a lot of, a lot of events now are streamed.
Yep, and where, um, since you have this picture, where is the new, um, scoreboard?
New scoreboard is up at the north end. The existing one is right here. And we're proposing it, um, a little bit ori, better orientation for visitors, um, to move it over to the northeast a little bit. The existing one's up against the fence line of the baseball field.
Okay, so it's not visible offsite?
Uh, well, it may be from this neighborhood down here that's four fields away.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, you know, the baseball one sits out here too. The baseball one sits out in the outfield. Um, and, uh, so that one's also facing the same direction.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions on the the retaining wall? What, what is the height of the retaining wall?
It's going to be about eight to nine feet tall. We have a fence along the top of it. It drops down. There's a, there's a hollow right here in the, in the middle. Um, and so for grading purposes to get the track in place, um, so the track is up and as it drops down, it'll be eight to nine feet tall at the highest point and it's fenced all along the top of it. And it's approximate, and it's approximately eleven feet, the, the eleven feet from the track lane lines. There's a, a track curb that's a concrete curb that's flat, flat, um, outside of the track. Um, and that is in case the school ever intends to fence it. There's, the only fencing associated with this project right now is just the fencing at the top of the wall.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Are we ready to make a motion? Kevin, there's a, uh, draft motion in the minute, in the, uh, prop box.
Okay, um, move to approve application twenty-two oh eight of S M R T Architects and Engineers, Ken Costello agent. Um, and basically just refer to the attachment A. Or the motion and the conditions. Um, general conditions of approval, there's four of them. Administrative zoning permit is required for the project pre-construction meeting is required applicant is to schedule meetings with applicable town staff before site work starts. Three, and erosion and sediment control measures are to be reviewed and approved by code compliance officer prior to start of the work. Applicant is to provide staff twenty-four hour notice for scheduling erosion and sediment control inspection. Four, the commission authorizes staff to act on their behalf concerning minor modification changes to the approved site plan as it relates to landscaping, grading, lighting and utility layout. Uh, request for modifications are to be made in writing and approved by staff prior to implementation in the field. And there's also a, a administrative zoning permit and building permit required.
Can you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Further discussion?
Okay, is the field for multiple use or is it just going to be field? I mean, can you do soccer in the middle or is it not big enough?
Oh, no, actually, it's actually designed for a, a full-size soccer, well, not a full-size soccer field. Eight N C A, I mean, a National Federation of High School Sports compliant soccer field. So right now the soccer field's playing about a hundred ninety-five. We're getting about two-ten onto it now wide, so, um, it's a much better soccer field. So that's really what drove the dimensions for the track.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay, it's carries six, nothing. It's approved. Thank you very much. Very nice project.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. General commission business.
We got, we got, uh, application twenty-one twenty-seven, twenty-one seventeen.
Yeah, I've got, I've got an update for you. Uh, so the, uh, the approval of the Iron Horse, thirty-two, thirty-four Iron Horse Boulevard Barber Cove project, um, went through D E P approval. Um, while this is a public hearing, I'll be happy to state in my ten years of, um, being a practicing Wetlands agent, um, I, this one got him, handed, handed, well, got taken very seriously by D E P, whether right or wrong or whatever their justifications were. So we wanted to give you an update because these aren't minor changes. These are substantive changes directed by the state of Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection and Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Um, surprisingly, um, the bike pad path circulation around the, um, units that were proposed was negated by the Department of Environmental Protection, um, due to their site, um, their superiors or their specialists seeing that it was too much of an impact. Um, with that in mind, um, the contractor who's here, um, or the ownership or I think Chris, Chris Nelson was here somewhere. But anyhow, um, they're going to grade everything and leave it as a grass path rather than having the, um, bike pad path cross through the development. Um, it's the least that they can do is still allow access. There won't be the need for the town cross easements for maintenance or anything like that. But in the future, if any of the dynamics change either on D E P's side or any other sides, um, that it could be established at some point with negotiations with the town and the cross easements and the maintenance agreements moving forward. But at this time, D E P did not, um, find it a, uh, wise decision to put that in there due to environmental impacts. We don't have a choice on that. It's a, um, state body who's driving this. As much as we want it, I'm happy that the developer is willing to put in the, um, the infrastructure to make it possible in the future to some, some ability. Um, but at this point in time, uh, the state has ruled that we're not allowed to have that. Um, and that update is brought to you because it is more than a minor change which staff would approve. We wanted you to be updated so that when um, either you or the public see it and ask questions of why has that not been established, um, that has been a ruling from the Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, can we have a, I think we would need to make a motion to adjust the site plan to change the, uh, surface of the, of the path from gravel to grass?
I think you could, I think you could do that. I mean, this is a ruling from the state, so we don't really have a choice, but at the same time, we could put that into the record so that at least we recognize this change dictated by the state.
Well, I think we still would like the path to be there and if, that all the D E P has said is we can't put gravel there.
A gravel or pavement, yeah.
Or pavement. So if we wanted, um, Chris Nelson to keep the, uh, path through there, we probably should modify the site plan.
I'd be happy for Chris to speak to that.
Chris?
Sure, um, can you hear me all right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it, um, let's see. Um, it's, it's been really frustrating with DEEP. This was approved by DEEP in two thousand fifteen when they told the Gerards, go ahead, regrade the. go ahead, regrade the entire property and you, and, and create the Lomar, the letter of map revision that they did. And then it comes back to them after that's all done and after we cleaned up on the environmental issues that were out there on the site. It was a brownfield. We clean all that up and, and here they say, first they wanted us to eliminate some buildings because they wanted a hundred-foot untouched buffer on something that's already fully, fully graded and a bunch of dirt piles and whatnot that we cleaned up. It's, it's really abusive. At any rate, as a compromise to get this done, uh, we agreed that we would take out the paved path, especially on the left-hand side and the gravel path in the back. Um, and that's a regular, their requirement. So we'll just, um, grass it. And Greg and I, Greg's here too, we're happy if the town wants to apply some pressure and say, what the heck are you guys doing to deep? Um, we're happy to go back, but I don't want to stall the project any longer. Um, it's already taken nine months to get to this point, um, it, which is, it's just silly. And they're worried about, uh, crustaceans or little mussels coming from the Farmington River and migrating somehow all the way up here onto this property. And then we called them out on that and they said, got our experts to say no, there are no mussels. Nothing's going to happen. It's no impact whatsoever. And then they said, well, what about the, the leopard frog? And that's not even a threatened or endangered species, but they got some traction on there and, and now they want us to hire herpetologists. It, it, we actually have a call with the deputy commissioner of deep tomorrow, uh, actually Wednesday, um, because of some of the frustration on this. But at any rate, we'd like to move ahead. We'd like to do this as grasped. We're committing to do the paths, just not paved or gravel.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
We won't have the cross easements with the town, um, but we're not restricting that access in any way. And there is, uh, vehicular access on the roads because there was vehicular access before, uh, to the back where the observation platforms are going to be looking over the, um, bird sanctuary in the back.
Okay.
Sorry about that long explanation.
It's, it's fine. I, you've earned it. Um, okay. Does someone want to make a motion to adjust?
I'll make a motion regarding the Barber Cove residential development, um, that we recognize it as a site plan amendment that would eliminate the stone dust path near the wetlands and the paved perimeter walkway. The intent of the, is for the grading and other plan elements to remain unchanged.
That's great.
I'll second that.
Who's second today?
Uh, Jackie.
Jackie, Jackie. Okay, further discussion. Listen.
I just wanted to comment in general that I'm, I'm really disappointed about this. Um, you know, this project was originally envisioned as a mix, um, single family and townhouse and apartments. And it seems that more and more, I mean, now we're at just apartments and now we're taking away what would have been, uh, you know, an ethologically, you know, nice component to this apartment complex to make it something maybe slightly different, um, than, than more of the same that we've had over and over and over again, um, with the recent spate of apartment complexes. I'm really just, I'm just disappointed.
Okay.
We are as well.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Any abstain? Nope. Can't pass the six, nothing. Okay, Chris, thank you very much. Sorry for the
folks.
problems you've had. Okay. Uh, any other commission business that, Tom or Laura? We have a special meeting next Monday to continue the, um, sign regulations. And, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that we can have the sign regulation edited and corrected to reflect the, uh, last meeting. We're going to be able to get that done? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So that we'll see that in the, in the Dropbox. Um, we also have, uh, it was brought up a little bit by Bruce, but I took a look at the, uh, center zone regulations. And there's a whole section with sign regulations in the center zone. And I think we need to have, um, our new planning director take a look at that when he comes in and see whether there's conflicts there that we need to resolve. And there's also the question of priorities. And I think we ought to, uh, look at the things that we, we have in front of us and we can talk about those. In our next meeting if we want, but I think we have to, we have to address the cannabis regulation because we have until September twenty-seventh, I believe, is the date, uh, when our moratorium expires. And we also need to deal with the ADU changes if we're going to make any, um, as quickly as we can so that the selectmen won't hold up, um, hold up the opt-out choices. So anyway, anybody have anything else?
I would just like to add that I will be meeting with the, um, the new, um, town planner a week from today. And those are all issues on the list that I will be bringing up to him to bring him up to speed. And, um, amongst other things that are going on as far as development. So I hope to give him a good tutorial on what, what is in the pipeline, what needs to be addressed and what's of most importance, especially with our deadlines that we have on certain motions that we haven't, have made. Um, I'd also like to add that, um, I will be leaving the town of Simsbury and, um, moving on. Um, I have another, uh, week from Friday, Laura. I think I said that well enough so I don't get chastised. But, um, I'll be moving on to Middletown. Um, Mr. McGregor and I, like I said, will have our meeting and we'll get ourselves up to speed. Um, he has done cannabis regulations in the town of Vernon prior, so he's, um, had some familiarity with that process as well as some P O C B writing as far as, um, some A D U issues and stuff like that. So I think it'll be a smooth transition. Um, Laura and I have worked together closely for two years, so I don't think there'll be any hiccups. And as she knows and, um, other members of the community know that I'm always available for questions, whether I'm with the town or not. So I appreciate everyone's, um, civic duties that you've, uh, given as well. I have not spent as much time with this commission as I could have, but, um, I do appreciate everybody's, um, generosity to the town and I've been enjoyed my tenure here for sure. And someday maybe I'll be back.
Thank you very much, Tom. I was about to stop you.
Thank you.
You were leaving and we're going to congratulate you on your new position.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your help through all these years.
Thank you.
These two years.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we meeting in person next week?
No, we, we have a, uh, there's a conflict with the, uh, F O I regulations and streaming versus being in person and all of that. So we will be zooming.
And then in April? Oh, sorry.
No, this is the special meeting next, next week as the Aquifer.
Oh, the Aquifer.
There's also an Aquifer meeting before the special meeting.
I will be hosting the Aquifer Protection Meeting. Um, um, it is just for a name change on a, um, on a Aqua, uh, Aquifer certificate. Um, the management plan hasn't changed. It should be a quick meeting prior to the special meeting. Um, and I don't foresee any major issues. Um, just to put it bluntly and quickly, um, the owner of Pride sold all his assets in the Pride franchise. So there's a name change on their application. Management plan stays the same. It's a simple rudimentary, um, uh, observation of the name change. So it should go quick. Um, and that is a reflection of the zoning commission to approve that.
Okay.
Quick question. Did we get an invite for next Monday's meeting? Cause sometimes things get buried in my inbox and I don't recall seeing that.
It should have gotten both.
No, it is not.
Oh, no, he hasn't.
I don't believe it was sent out yet, but I will make sure.
Wait a minute, the Aquifer Protection meeting was sent out.
That one.
That I got.
Our meeting, our, our special meeting will follow that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure because sometimes I delete things. So I just want to make sure I didn't lose it. Thank you.
I don't, I don't foresee any issues. Um, Aquifer Protection hasn't, since two thousand eighteen, we'll just review minutes from then. If anybody remembers the meeting and then, um, we'll, we'll go through the name change process.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I did notice that the membership on the Aquifer Committee, whatever, was out of date.
It is the zoning commission.
Yeah, the town, the town clerk's office has been working, um, quite diligently about getting everything up to date as far as memberships are concerned. Um, we have a new, uh, town clerk and she's been working very hard at getting everything updated. Considering the Aquifer Protection doesn't meet very often. I think it's the low, it's the latter. Uh, she's getting all the low hanging fruit first.
But legally, does some of the newer members need to get sworn into that?
No, I think it's just a direct reflection.
We didn't have to be sworn in before.
It, it's not much of a, no, I'll, I'll double check everything. I'll double check that.
Commission was designated as the Aquifer Protection.
Yeah, I don't believe there's an issue there, but I'll double check.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
So Dave, are we meeting in person on April fourth for our meeting?
I don't believe so.
I thought we voted on this at one of our last meetings that that's what we were going to do.
We, we said we were going to try to do it, but we don't have, we don't have the bandwidth, uh, cleared to do that yet.
Well, we could meet in person, just in person without doing the, the hybrid.
Oh, you have to have, you have, we have to have some sort of, I think we have to have, uh, no. We, we might be able, you're, you're muted, Laura.
You also have to have streaming capability. Um, if it's a hybrid meeting, there's, there's a few different rules and it depends. There's only certain, uh, rooms in which we can do it. So I know for the special meeting, it was definitely not, not available at that time. And as far as the April fourth, I'm hoping that the, uh, the meeting, well, I'm hoping by the following meeting after the April fourth, that the director can kind of take control as far as which rooms, what nights for meetings and whether or not it's Zoom or hybrid.
Do we have the, do we have the choice to reject hybrid and go all, you know, all in person?
I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. From what I understanding is you still have to have the ability to live stream it. So until I, till I can get a clarification, I think it's safer to make sure we have a legal meeting by doing it for Zoom.
Okay.
And it is a heavy staff burden. And if I'm not there that week, um, I will, my last day is April first. The director's first day will be April eleventh. After that, there should be more staff available. Um, Laura and Joe will be alone for that first week. And, um, staffing will be an issue for the hybrid meeting. Um, so without having clarification on whether it has to be all in person, hybrid or all remote. Um, if we could just kick the can a little bit, I think it would help staff out a little bit. I'll advocate for them on that. But, um, I know, I know there's a desire and, um, everybody is desiring to be a little bit more in person. So I know we're making, we're, we're making those roads.
We, we'll do it and we'll plan a Zoom meeting through April fourth and see if we can't get in person after that. But it's, it's really not up to us, Jackie. We just can't, can't do it arbitrarily without making sure we're not in F O I trouble. I have spent mornings at the F O I. It's not fun. Okay.
Their afternoons, on the other hand.
Tom's a nice guy. Tom, Tom's a really nice guy at F O I. Come on.
We have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Start it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thanks, everybody. See you next week.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.